This is the convening of the eighth ZBA hearing on the comprehensive permit application for 455 Harvard Street. To my left is Mr. Christopher Hussey and to my right is Ms. Lark Palermo. I am Keith Poverman, chairing this hearing. Further to the left, we have Polly Selka, who is the Assistant Director of Regulatory Planning.
Good, yes.
Karen Martin was a planner. I'm not sure if you have a more exalted title than that.
That's a very exalted.
Planner, okay. So, I know we have a bunch of things we were going to go through today, some of which are details discussed in the potential waiver list and the draft conditions. However, I understand that there has been a little...
Hiccup.
Hiccup relating to the plans.
So, why don't we let the applicant's attorney present? I think, in addition to, you know, telling about the new development, I think you're going to give a clarification on the vapor barrier, which basically was that you're going to do that, and we put that in as one of the conditions. But, go ahead. This is Jennifer Gilbert.
Thank you. My name is Jennifer Depazzo Gilbert. I'm an attorney. I work with the Law Office of Robert Allen, and I represent the developer. I'd like to discuss the hiccup. So, the hiccup has to do with a public shade tree. As you know, in our waiver list, we have requested a waiver from the local bylaw tree removal permit. And it is town council, your town council's opinion, that that is not waivable, and I think the Chair also agrees with town council's opinion. It's an interesting legal issue, because actually 40B practitioners are split on the issues. Some communities include that in the waiver list, others don't. For example, Hingham takes the same position that the Town of Brookline does, that it is not waivable. My opinion, and some practitioners agree with me, is that it is waivable, that although it is a state law under Chapter 87, the actual permit is not a state permit. It's a local permit that is either approved by the tree warden, or if there is opposition, it would be approved by the Board of Selectmen. So, needless to say, there's a split amongst practitioners, and that issue has never gone up on appeal, so we have no guidance from the court on that particular issue.
I don't want this case to be the one going up on appeal.
Right. We don't either, and so we want to save the tree. And so, the developers have spent an extraordinary amount of time and money on several consultants. I have met with Tom Beatty. We have retained an arborist to go to the site and see if that tree could be saved, or, in lieu of saving it, move it on the same street. Keep it on Thorne Dyke Street, but reset it over a little bit to accommodate the proposed driveway. We then went to another arborist, who then specializes further in actually moving trees. He returned from Bangladesh and met with the developers at the site, consulted with Tom Beatty, and it was the opinion that the tree should not be removed. So, we would like additional time to simply see if we can tweak the plan just a bit on the driveway and save that tree and keep it in its existing location. We think we'll be able to do that. We have to consult with the architect and the engineer, but don't believe that it will impact the draft decision or conditions significantly that are before you. So, that's the hiccup.
Do you have a picture?
Of what?
Where the tree is.
So, we'll present that at the next hearing. What we have this evening, what Mr. Barshak will present, is the color scheme that you requested a look at on the rear of the rear facade. But I just wanted to explain that. So, the waiver list still includes that tree removal permit, just because we would want to preserve our rights of appeal, should we not be able to correct that with a change in the driveway location.
Is that the procedure? Because I would be inclined to just say, "You're not going to have the waiver. I'm not going to put it in the waiver list to allow you to heal it." That doesn't make sense.
Yeah, I think that's justified. Right. So, I think that as long as the board votes that, and it's on the record that you're not granting that waiver, that's fine with us, because that preserves our rights, should we need to.
Okay, that's fine.
Yes, yes. Thank you. So, I'll turn it over to Mr. Barshak to present the additional detail on the rear facade that you requested.
Thank you. Hello, Peter.
Hi. Good evening. Peter Barshak from Q3 Studio. We're here at The Architects on a Project. At the last hearing, we went through what we were proposing to submit as a plan of record and talked about some changes we had made to the elevations of the building and to the plants. During that discussion, during the board's deliberation, it was suggested that we revisit the materials on the northeast facade facing 78 Thorne Dyke Street. So, here is the elevation that we had looked at.
Is that the tree?
At the previous... No, that's the tree further down the street, closer to Harvard Street. It's like three times as tall as the tree that's actually in question. But, the elevation we're talking about is this elevation. We had proposed a lap siding material that was more consistent with kind of the residential fabric of the neighborhood, and there was a shingle, or a fiber cement shingle style material on the stair tower bump out. We had added some trim to the windows and to that stair bump out, as well as to some of the horizontal bricks moving up the facade to start to break down the facade, and the board came back and said, "We'd rather see this as brick turning the corner." So, we went back and revised the elevation to be brick in response to that request. Created the same kind of window details over as well, in that brick material from either side. And then are continuing to use that lap siding at the stair tower to avoid some of the constructibility concerns we have about what happens when the brick reaches above that third level on this facade. So, we have the brick, and then we maintain the fiber cement up the center of that facade. And we think that using the fiber cement at the stair tower helps assist with visually breaking down the life of the facade, so we like that change in color and also the articulation. And that's the sole change that we've made to the project since that last hearing.
Good.
Yeah, I like it.
Yeah, I agree. I agree.
Were you ready for that?
Now, what is the date of that plan? Do you, you know, I know this board accepted as a plan of record previously. Do we want to modify that at all? I know this is just a material, but might make it cleaner.
For the record, Jeff Engler from SEB, representing the developer, considering the public hearing is going to be left open, we can submit an updated set with an updated date inclusive of the new rear elevation, just so it's clean and it will supersede, obviously. The engineering, mind you, is not changing.
No, I understand.
So, just the architectural.
Great.
Won't there also be in need, if they have to adjust the plan for the garage?
Of course, you're right, of course.
Yes, of course, of course.
Thank you. Obviously, yeah. So, we were going to go over the waiver list, and you actually have a copy in front of you. It just happens to be stapled to the end of the decision, because there are going to be three exhibits attached to a decision. And those three exhibits are Exhibit 1, the waiver list. Exhibit 2, which you also have, is a replacement regulatory agreement, which takes effect after, I think after the mass, after the subsidizing agency no longer requires the affordable units to be affordable, they will be affordable in perpetuity. So, this agreement...
It's when it stops monitoring, isn't that correct?
Excuse me?
Is it when the subsidizing agency stops monitoring?
Yes.
And that responsibility is switched?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay.
And this prepared by Virginia Bullock, who is our housing planner. So, it's been used in other cases, but it was modified for this case. And then the third exhibit, Exhibit 3, is just going to be a copy of the legal notice that shows the opening of this hearing. So, those are the three exhibits. In the exhibit with the waiver list, and what we'll do, I'm sure the applicant will give us a new one and a new date, and they will eliminate, as you request, waiver from the town arborist and/or Board of Selectmen. That's on the last page. They've also eliminated the note that was at the bottom, saying that, you know, waiving anything else that's necessary. They eliminated that. So, I think the other waivers, we've pretty much gone over, and I've gone over them with the building commissioner, and they're pretty straightforward.
I have one question. I noticed that in waiver L for the design of off-street parking facilities, a sentence was removed requiring, which granted a waiver relating to having a parking attendant with the citywide parking machine. And I was wondering why.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand that. You're saying that originally there was supposed to be an attendant?
Yeah. Yeah, no, originally it said there was getting a waiver from the requirement to be an attendant.
Well, because they're not going to have an attendant, these stacker, I'll let the applicant explain the stackers. They just drive in, push a button, and it goes up.
I know, but from past, one of the past, it might have been 420, or the JFK one, rather, there was a law, maybe it was a state law, saying you needed an attendant there if it was going to be a motorized thing. And if it's state law, obviously, it can't be waived.
Well, I don't know. Will you kind of address that?
I mean, it's really due, but I'm just wondering.
I don't know where this is coming from, but I will speculate for the board's pleasure. I think it may have had to do with the project on Boylston Street, which had a valet system and had a certain number of cars that were going to be required to be parked in tandem, and had a lift to raise the cars up to the people.
And you mean the Boylston that's in Chestnut Hill?
Yes.
1180.
1180. So, I think there was some sort of...
I wasn't on that one, but maybe it served as the model.
There may be some leftover language or something, but there's never been any attendant speculated on this project, on JFK Crossing, on 20, on 40 Center, on any of the other Brookline projects of a similar type, so...
No, yeah, I agree. It's just I'm trying to remember where the language was that indicated you needed one, and there was a discussion of, "Oh, do you need to train people? You know, do we need to have training once a year?" But I'm the only one who's remembering this, so we will let it go for now.
Okay.
Oh, Peter, did you have something to add? Mr. Barshak? No? Okay.
So, I mean, if you'd like, I think after looking at the waiver list, you could accept it, noting that you are specifically eliminating waiver number M...
Is it M?
Which is a waiver from the town arborist and/or Board of Selectmen for the tree removal permit process. So, you are eliminating that. They do need to meet the tree remove, the town's tree removal permit process.
Okay. I don't have any problem with that. Lark, what's your reaction?
I'm comfortable.
That's fine.
Okay. Then, we are hereby officially accepting these proposed waivers with the caveat that current number M is going to be eliminated, and that will show in subsequent drafts of this, actually, the final draft of the waiver list.
Yes, that will be attached to the decision. Then, if you all would turn to the conditions, which start on page four. We could go through these now, which would save us, you know, the time of going through them at a later point, if you are happy with them. I hope that everybody on this board has had a chance to go through them. I know Kate has gone through them very thoroughly and diligently. And also, the applicant's team has gotten a copy of this list, and as far as I know at this point, they have not objected to any of the conditions.
I have a couple of comments or questions while my colleagues are going through this. On right where the, well, we haven't gone with the decision, but when we get there, it has to do with whether or not we specify that there's 1735 square feet or 2,000 square feet. So, that's...
Right. I noticed that, too, because we say up to, I think we're...
I have a comment about the decision, too, but it seems to me we're probably going to talk about that at the next meeting.
Well...
No, I think that we might as well discuss it now.
Yeah, yeah. So...
Okay.
So, this is not the conditions. You want to go further back, and you want to go more towards the beginning.
Comments and questions?
Yeah, let's start on page one.
Okay, thank you. Is there... Of the conditions, are we going through the conditions?
No, I think, I think, Lark, am I correct that you'd like to start on page one, where you start with procedural history?
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
I have comments on page one.
Yeah, so let's go through it page by page, so...
And they're small things.
Mm-hmm.
The first comment is one I've already made, which is that the plan dates are going to have to be...
They're going to have to be changed.
I just want to highlight it, so we don't lose sight of that.
Absolutely. Thank you. And also, the waiver later on. Okay.
And, obviously, we're going to have to adjust, you've written a nice sort of comprehensive in paragraph five, that all the continuance are with the applicant's written consent, so that will cover the next continuance, but we're going to need to change the number date.
And we'll need a new waiver. We'll also need a new waiver.
Right.
Okay, good. I've noted that, so we won't forget it.
I just want to make sure we get all these.
And number seven, the date of the closing.
And number eight.
And number eight.
And then I just have a question about number 10. And again, I just got recalled, if we also have an environmental...
Yeah, we did. You're right.
Engineer as our consultant.
It says environment, but it doesn't say, yeah, you are, it doesn't say environmental.
Well, it says, "Considered technical review, an independent site and building and design peer reviewer, an independent traffic and parking peer reviewer." And I thought we had an independent LSP, but I don't recall.
We absolutely did, yeah.
Precisely.
Yeah, I was recalling it today, so...
A peer reviewer? No, I don't, I...
We did.
I think you did. I don't remember.
Yeah, I was reviewing.
Oh, you know, you're right. Right in the beginning, where we talked about how...
I can show you...
The groundwater flowed and all that.
Everybody's talking about that.
Okay.
Okay, what I recommend...
Anyway, let me, in condition number 10, we are going to add that we had...
What I recommend is four or five lies down, starting with design peer reviewer, comma, and an independent traffic, at a comma, environmental, and parking peer reviewer.
No, because the traffic and parking peer reviewer...
With the same...
No, they were separate. They were...
They were separate, but they were, ought to go together. So, let me add the environmental at the end.
Okay, great.
Okay, good. And then we'll have to, so we will have to add that person to number 11.
Yeah, Mr. Stading. He was an expert, wasn't he?
Who?
The parking person, wasn't he Mr., his name, Mr. Stading?
Right, I can get his, add his name. He was a subconsultant to James Fitzgerald.
Right, but he, I think it's important to put his name.
Okay, so add, add his name. Stay, Stade, something like Stade.
S-D-A-D-I-G.
Stade, okay.
Yeah. Arthur Stading.
Okay. Okay, if we're done with page two, we'll go on to page three, which continues the findings.
Yeah, I just, in this regard, I just simply have a question. It's with respect to number three and number four. I actually didn't realize that the MHFA eligibility determination assumed 25% would be, of the units would be available for households making 80% or less than AMI, and that it's changed, apparently. They've, that must be what they submitted to MHFA, but then they changed and decided they would prefer...
Yeah, I think it's a little lesson.
And I'd just like to understand why they, you know, what led to that.
Okay, yeah. Jeff, maybe you can respond to that.
And forgive me if you've already explained why you've changed your mind.
No, that's okay. Well, it's a good ques, I mean, I mean, the simple answer is either program is eligible under mass housing's program. So, the developer can either do 20% at 50, or 80% at, or 25% at 80, and the developer actually is doing more, not granted hugely more, but more than 20%. They've had success on other projects with 50% units, and quite simply, it's an eligible program, and that's what they've chosen to do.
That's what I'm looking for. In other words, you know, was there some part of the decision-making process that took into account that there's a greater need for units for families making 50% or less? Is there, you know, it's clearly not...
Not really. Anecdotally...
One quarter, one quarter, 80 to 120. I'm just, I'm just wondering what, you know, what drove that choice.
There's no magic, there's no magic formula strategy. Anecdotally, the town and people that work in affordable housing for the Town of Brookline would tell you there is a big need at 50%.
Okay.
But it's not like that there was a, we put the numbers into a formula and outspit, you know, it's, so...
That's all I needed to know. Thank you.
Do we want to put the exact percentage in here? And I have Karen figuring it out now. It's 23 and a half, 25.
Yeah, I mean, if we've done this, it's, we would feel more comfortable putting four of 17, because they're decimals, you know, relative to the 23. So, we would suggest putting specifically four of 17 in that.
And I think that's elsewhere in the decision.
Yeah, I do have it elsewhere, yes, definitely.
Yeah, that's more precise. I agree with that. And then, just, and this is going to be when this gets revised, clarifying that the site...
Which number are you on?
Oh, I'm on five and six. These two go together. The address of the site is 455 Harvard Street. I think I might start with that, and then explain that it's a corner lot that actually is within two zoning districts. L110, or maybe it's not.
No, it's not. It's not...
Okay, it's only in one. Okay, then, that's me.
But we say the site is at 455 Harvard, and is a corner lot.
Yeah.
It's a corner lot.
And then, and then we can just say it's owned as an L110. And then you can go in number six, just a description of...
Yeah.
I think what confused me was where the sentence at the end of six said, "The site extends into a two-family district," and maybe the neighborhood would be...
Is bordered by, is that better?
Yeah, that would be better, yeah. Because I misinterpreted that to mean that it's a two-family zoning district.
Okay. Anything else on page three?
Yeah, I'll look at the bottom. Number 13, the applicant stated that parking on the site will not be available to customers of the commercial tenant, which is correct. And then it says, "Or tenants." And just to clarify, we could just add, you mean, "Or tenants of the commercial tenant," but we could qualify it by saying something like, "Parking is exclusively for residential tenants of the building," just so we're clear.
So, I'll add that sentence.
Yeah, I think that clarifies it.
Okay, we're on to page four.
That's all I have on the findings.
Anyone else? So, we'll start with the conditions, then?
Actually, I have a comment on the decision, little paragraph right below...
Yes.
19. I would prefer that instead of saying...
Oh, yes.
Approximately 2,000 square feet, we just say 1735.
Is that, are you going to have 1735 square feet, 1,0735 square feet?
That's what we've been seeing the whole hearing.
That's too specific.
Should we say approximately?
When you go to working drawings, you can move some square footage, you can gain some square footage, not, not going to, yeah, 100, but I would...
So, rather than no more than 2,000 square feet, maybe we should say no more than...
No more than 2,000, I think.
Well, my concern is, you know, is I don't want anything bumping into, or taking away from any, any of the rest of the design that we've seen. So, whether it's, I don't think we go into residential, but...
Well, they can't change the number of units, and they can't change the number of parking without coming back for modification.
Right. 250 feet is, you know, can be a lot, depending on how it's used. So, I'd rather, I'm more comfortable with 1,900 even.
Okay. Okay, condition number one.
Wait, wait, wait. We need to specify the parking spaces. So, write down from 2,000, and blank parking spaces, as shown on the site plans.
And 10.
Right, 10.
Parking spaces, as shown on the plans.
Okay. And under the first condition, again, changing it to 1,900 instead of 2,000.
Yeah.
Great.
Could we be consistent and do approximately above, if we're going to have approximately the conditions?
Sure, makes sense.
Okay, again, it says parking shall not be available to customers visiting the commercial space or to off-site residents or businesses. Do you want me to add parking shall be only for...
Exclusively for residential tenants.
Right.
Yeah, and in number one, if we're still talking about that, the decision's final that it's 10 parking spaces total. Is that correct?
So, we should say N10.
Then I would say, yeah, and as Kate said, N10 parking spaces with no more than whatever the, and I wouldn't say no fewer than 10, because we really zeroed in on that number. But then, no more than whatever the number is that's going to be in lifts. How many are in lifts? Seven, six, five?
Oh, okay, well, they're...
Seven.
Seven?
Seven.
Okay, whatever that number is, then I would say, you know, with no more than seven in lifts.
Okay, so break it down, no care...
Well, I'll say on the lift structures, because obviously some...
Right, what, you know, right, yes.
Three is all utilities shall be underground, which is required. And then number four just says that if there is res...
Guys, do you have anything to say to, do you want to share with the class in general, or?
Well, here's a few more questions. I apologize.
Okay. Number four says any restaurant use will have, shall conform to all the building and health codes, including...
Can you remind me, again, what we decided about restaurant use? I share a little confusion sometimes between cases.
Yeah, well, they had spoken originally about having restaurant use and even having tables outside. I don't know if that's going to happen.
And did we, did we discuss this?
We haven't discussed it. It was in JFK that we discussed...
Just limiting it, and now they want to broaden it.
Restrictions and ventilation.
Right, okay.
Yeah.
So, so, okay.
And I think that the neighbors didn't object to restaurant use there. There is a restaurant there now as well.
No, I know there's a restaurant there now. I was actually thinking about the tenants.
That's why we're saying including providing adequate ventilation. Number five, for the 17 units shall be available to households earning at or below 50% of AMI. Then we go to page five. Number six just talks about the, gives a table of the number of bedrooms.
Let me ask you this. Is it necessary to state that one of the three bedrooms will be for low income? Because 10% is required, isn't it?
It is.
So, I'd like to specify for that.
So, why don't I put an asterisk after three bedrooms, and then put an asterisk below the table that says, "One of the three bedrooms shall be in a four..." the table that says one of the three bedrooms shall be an affordable unit?
Great.
Okay, and number seven talks about the waiver, so we'll have to update the date. Number eight.
There's a typo. It's the only thing I have.
In number seven or eight?
No, eight.
Eight.
Which is in the line right above the first blue line. It says listed under item three, add a space.
Yeah, thank you.
Under procedural procedure.
Okay, item number eight talks about the fact that the Assistant Director for Regulatory Planning has review and approval of the final design, including facade design, materials, and rooftop details. And then we added some language that you had suggested, Kate. Color, windows, and materials shall be the same as presented at the final public hearing and any changes shall be reviewed and approved onsite by the Assistant Director for Regulatory Planning with a reason, within a reasonable timeframe.
So, we may need to change the final public hearing if the next public hearing discusses something other than colors and materials.
Right, actually, I would say presented in the plan of record.
Yeah.
Perfect. And does that actually describe the materials being used in the line of record? Great.
Number nine talked about the final site and landscaping plan, which is typical. Again, the final plan will be reviewed by the Assistant Director for Regulatory Planning and it's going to have to include any fences, walls, patios, exterior lighting, location of utilities, mechanicals, parking spaces, bicycle storage, location of trash recycling, and snow storage. Number 10, I added, Kate, you had suggested that we specifically cite that they had to have a site vapor barrier plan and I believe.
I have a question about that. I thought it was really clear to me that their LSP specifically recommended that they install a vapor barrier.
Correct.
So, where's this plan? I mean, wouldn't we just say the project?
Wouldn't the plan have to first be approved and then they?
It would have to be, I mean, well, the installation of the vapor barrier would be before the building commissioner and it would be part of their building plans.
So, just take out the site or something like.
So, just say shall install a site vapor plan.
Well, no, a vapor barrier.
Vapor barrier subject to the review and approval of the building commissioner.
Right, and you could, could, you know, you could actually describe it a little more detail and to say address potential off-site, you know, issues associated with the off-site vapors.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think that's necessary.
I mean, if you want to say why, well, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not saying it's their site. It's we all.
It could be, for instance, from the gas station.
Yeah, we're not comfortable with that language that's proposed there. And also, what the site vapor barrier.
Mr. Engler, we now have like five different citations of the language. Which language are you not comfortable with?
The, the language that was just proposed about the purpose of the vapor barrier.
You'd, you'd rather not have the purpose.
Well, you, the, the vapor barrier by definition has a purpose and we are.
This is true.
And the vapor barrier, I, I think, as I understand what you're saying, you want confirmation that it's installed and, and a vapor barrier plan. I would take out prior to the issuance of a building permit and say prior to the issuance of an occupancy permit, the clients will have installed a vapor barrier.
Well, it would be something you'd install at the very beginning of construction.
Right, but not before a building permit.
How about prior to commencement of construction, which we have actually in the next one?
No, with part of construction.
But that's why I'm saying I would leave it up to the building department to, they're really the gatekeepers here. They will approve your building plans to install vapor barriers.
Why don't we just say that you will install it?
The applicant shall install.
Correct.
A vapor barrier subject to the review and approval of the building commissioner.
With no reason for doing so.
All right, that's, we're comfortable with that.
Okay, fine.
Okay, the next condition has to do with a lighting plan, that that has to be, first of all, our bylaw requires that there not be any shining on any abutting properties and that headlight glare from vehicles have to be shielded in accordance with local bylaws. So, they have to submit a lighting plan to the commissioner, building commissioner for review and approval. And then this one we may want to change because it has to do with the street tree. Prior to commencement of construction, the applicant shall meet with the town arborist to review the health of the existing street trees. Well, that's.
Yeah, let's see what happens and if we need to massage that.
The applicant shall provide a plan for protecting existing street trees during construction and a plan for planting additional street trees with a review and approval by the town arborist, the all costs borne by the applicant. And then it says any proposed removal of street trees shall be subject to MGL Chapter 87, the Shade Tree Act.
So, you want to drop that sentence then, right?
No, because they are, they're going to have to.
But they're not going to remove any, as I understand it from what you've.
Yeah, I think we should see what happens and then massage that if necessary, okay?
So, you're saying if they didn't remove it, you wouldn't, I see what you mean, any proposed removal. Okay. Number 13 has to do with storm water management, sewage and drainage plan and erosion control plan. Those would be subject to the review of the Director of Transportation and Engineering. And then traffic mitigation, they will be responsible for the cost of traffic and pedestrian improvement, design plans to be approved by the Director of Engineering and Transportation, installation of the loading zone signage, curbing and striping, pavement markings for the crosswalks, construction of two of the four curb extensions and four of the corner ramps. The town will pay for curb extensions and ramps on the two corners on the west side of Harvard Street or the opposite side from. And this was language that was approved by Peter Ditto. And then B, the applicant shall ensure that Thorndike Street driveway apron is at the same level as the sidewalk elevation and that the material for the driveway apron is the same as that of the sidewalk.
Even the what?
No, it's not now, but we're approving.
Thank you.
The next condition has to do with the rubbish and recycling plan. It talks about the number of containers, how often they'll be picked up, and it even includes a condition that 90 days after all the residential units are occupied, the Chief of Environmental Health may review and approve the preliminary rubbish recycling plan for compliance with this decision, so that if there's a problem, they would have to, have to change it.
So, I have a couple of changes. One is that they are now proposing a total of five containers based on the most recent plan. And so, and that is why it looks like there actually are sufficient to support the amount of garbage that will be generated. So, on 14.
I mean, I've always thought we could combine A and B and just say.
Well, no, so 14, no, because I don't, I don't know why, but apparently there's a preference for commercial, the commercial trash and the residential trash to be separate. So, my assumption is that the three bins would go for the residential units, which is also much less than was in the JFK building, which had, what, for 25 buildings, a lot more garbage. So, I think it's good that we have the review further on down. Mr. Dinesh.
Hi, Daniel Dinesh with the development team. We expect there to be a total of four, but along the way, we expanded the trash room and we made some of the revisions and we believe that four is enough, but we can accommodate up to six. But we, but we believe that four is enough, so I just.
I don't, I don't believe four is enough based on the own numbers that you provided in your plan, which showed that with 17 apartments, at least what, 35 something, bags of garbage were going to be generated per week and that these 32, and it was going to be picked up twice a week, but it was still insufficient. So, I'm not happy with that.
Just, I think, I also read the 420 decision. I noticed that their pickup is only once a week.
They have, they have, what, 85 or 95 gallon containers. You have 32.
But they're, they're, I, I had, I've looked at numerous ways with our trash company. They also have a very large retail space. Our retail space is quite small and I went through it with the.
Well, what I'm saying is.
Mr. Maloney and he, he, he okayed it. He's, he's, this is his job. I had a trash company look at it. They okayed it. We, we do it at Marion Street.
I'm saying it's not okay. Okay, I brought this, I brought this issue up with Polly and she said she's, you know, sent it on to you, so this should not be a surprise.
Well, then I think they, they responded.
Right, and based, and you're responding based on the current plan, it's adequate. And the current plan shows five rubbish things.
So, would you like it, the conditions to say we have five total?
Yes, please.
So, then we would change A to, the, the number two to three.
Exactly.
Yeah, so we're okay with having, if, if you think there's going to be more, we need more for the residential, we'll do three for the residential and two for the commercial.
Thank you.
What did he say, three of?
It says, it says, I don't think it gives a total. Yeah, it just says a total of three for rubbish for the residential.
Oh, it's two three-yard containers, you know?
It should be three two-yard.
It's three two-yard containers.
Right. So, A should say a total of three two-yard containers.
Yeah, okay, so we've changed that.
And it was, it was proposed that it be picked up twice a week, as Mr. Dinesh Senior noted. That is what is in the trash plan that was submitted.
Okay, so we have to add that.
So, not just, it'll be picked up twice a week and shall comply with the town bylaws. Shall further comply?
Number 16 is the construction management plan.
16 or 15?
15.
15.
Well, you.
Oh, you got another one.
I, I had, are you looking at the, you're not looking at the one I handed out here? This is the one I handed out. I wrote draft at the top, but.
So, there's difference from what you just announced today and?
Yes, it is. There were still a few more little tweaks that we made and that's why I handed it out tonight.
So, we're number ahead of where I thought we were.
Well, it's also going to be triggered a bit with.
No, I'm just trying to figure out.
I'll say, if you look at page six now, Lark.
Yep.
And number 16.
Yeah, I have 15 on page six, so that's.
Yeah, so do I.
Yeah. There was also a problem with.
So, what did we miss?
Well, there's something.
We all think we're on 15.
Well, the numbers actually skipped, the numbers were wrong and I had, I needed my assistant to help me.
Straighten it out.
Okay.
Do the numbering and the formatting, so that's what the difference is.
So, somewhere, just so I, so I check here, so in the conditions, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, 12, 14. Ah ha, 14 should have been 15. That's it, got it.
Yeah. Okay, the construction management plan is quite extensive. It's similar to, to the other 40B projects. There's one thing, though, that was added at the request of the health director and that's the last sentence in number 16 on page seven. It says demolition of the existing structure requires prior approval and sign-offs from building, public health, fire, DPW, and planning.
So, it should be now 16, the last sentence.
16.
So, if this is.
So, you two are looking at, why don't you look at what I handed out?
I know, it's the same. Because this is what I made comments on.
Yeah, me too. Okay, so that last sentence you added, demolition of existing structures requires prior approval.
Right.
Yeah, and that, it's here.
Yes, it's in both. The only thing I really corrected was the numbering was, we had skipped a number.
The question I have on that one, Polly, is you, you said that this has been typically what has been approved.
Right.
In all our projects and that is a 7:00 AM start on weekdays.
Well, I know our bylaw allows 7:00 AM start.
Yeah, I just sometimes neighborhoods, when they're in a densely developed area, ask for a little bit later to start, but I don't want to.
Yeah, I, I don't think we should change that. I mean, it is, it is a commercial area where this is going in and I understand what the neighbors' sensitivities are. I have the same ones, but I think if we do that, it would be disparate treatment between the various 40Bs.
If you've done that across the board.
Yeah.
Okay.
The other thing is, of course, the longer they have to build it, the less, less time.
Yes, I know, just, it's okay with me.
Number 17 is saying that the construction period shouldn't take more than 30 months, except for causes beyond applicant's control. Number 18 requires written reports to the engineering and transportation and/or building commissioner during construction outlining the status of the project. Number 19, I got this language from the fire chief's representative. The building owner for fire safety shall adhere to NFPA 241, standard for safeguarding construction, alteration, and demolition of operations. And they have to contract with a third-party review company to make sure that that session is followed until a certificate of occupancy is issued.
Should we say the first certificate of occupancy or is there a number that we have to put in? I mean, A sort of implies first.
I think it means first.
Okay.
Number 20, the applicant has to provide to the Director of Transportation and Engineering a report and photographs of the condition of the pavement surfaces along the truck routes before construction begins and then prior to the certificate of occupancy to ensure construction traffic does not adversely affect the pavement. 21, before they get a certificate of occupancy, they have to have a registered architect and professional engineer certifying writing that the ASBIL plan complies with all the site plans and architectural plans. Number 22 just talks about temporary sign during construction and leasing period. Number 23 is.
Shouldn't 23 be prior to the issuance of the final certificate?
Well, I think.
He's going to change materials and colors. He's going to do that during construction. So, if we want to know about that beforehand, we should say.
No, I think, I think actually it's, this is as meant because we don't want changes to be made after the fact.
Why don't we say either after or before the issuances, if there are changes?
Yeah, because before is already accounted for, but I have no problem with that.
So, okay, where is it? Yes, I don't quite understand.
Well, the final, the final plans have to be reviewed by me.
Right, right.
But I don't think it hurts to, to say that after those final plans that, that, to state again, if there are changes, they've got to be approved by planning. And that, of course, is unless the plans are deemed substantial by the subsidizing agency. 24, they have to provide proof that the utility companies shall permit existing utilities to be eliminated or relocated underground and that the town shall not be financially responsible for any relocation of the utilities. 25 is there shall be no blasting during the construction. Twenty-five is there shall be no blasting during the construction. Twenty-six, uh, requires a transportation access plan, or a TAP, for reducing the number of vehi- vehicular trips to and from the project, uh, and that has to be prepared in accordance with the guidelines of the town, and to be reviewed and approved by the tran- director of transportation and engineering. Number twenty-seven, state...
There's a typo.
In twenty-seven?
Yes.
Okay.
As a condition of the approval hereunder, at least four of the seventeen, and take out of the...
Oh, yeah, seventeen.
Units.
Units. Shall be and shall remain affordable, and shall be marketed to eligible households, and it goes on to say what's required. Twenty-eight, affordable units have to be evenly dispersed through, and the bedroom, um, shall have the same bedroom ratio as the market rate units, and has to be subject to the approval of subsidizing agency. The specific units in the project designated as affordable may change from time to time, provided that there shall be no fewer than four units in the project that are affordable. And then it just goes on to say affordable units have to be indistinguishable from the market rate units in external appearance, have comparable interior finishes, and contain the same square footage as the average size of the project's market rate units and, and this number of bedrooms. Number twenty-nine, um, lease and occupancy agreements shall be for terms of not less than six months. Nightly rental shall not be permitted. So that, that is actually changed, it was one year, and applicant asked us to change it to six months, so do you have a problem with that?
I have no problem.
Yeah. Okay, number thirty, uh, prior to, uh, occupancy certificate, uh, the director of planning and community development has to review the, all the affordable units, ensure that they meet all the proper guidelines. Number thirty-one, um, the applicant will work with the assistant director of community development to request that at least seventy percent of the affordable units be awarded to households with local preferences during the initial lottery. Thirty-two...
Okay, sorry, typo time again.
Okay.
Thirty-one, um, second line, at least, there needs to be a space between at least in seventy percent?
Well, I actually caught that typo, and if you looked at my new draft, you would see that it's not there anymore.
All right, Paul, so is it local preferences or local preference? Whichever you want, I don't care.
Whatever you want.
Singular.
Singular? Okay, that's fine.
Thirty-two, um, the assistant director for community planning has to review the affirmative marking plan for the affordable units before it's submitted to the subsidizing agency for final approval, and will work with the applicant on that. Thirty-three, for a period in which the project is being monitored by the subsidizing agency, if the town so requests, the owner shall share all monitoring reports with the assistant director for community planning, including annual rent increases and information verifying income eligibility for affordable units. Thirty-four is, four units in the project shall in perpetuity be affordable. And then it goes on to talk about the monitoring agreements that we've mentioned. Thirty-five, again, is about monitoring, a monitoring agent, uh, the applicant has to retain a monitoring agent or a consultant designated by the town for the project, for the period commencing at the expiration of the affordability restrictions imposed by the subsidizing agency, and all costs are borne by the owner. Thirty-six, um, subject to the requirements of the subsidizing agency, uh, applicant shall provide a copy to the board of selection of any and all, of any and all cer- certifications, statements, reports, appraisal notices, et cetera, to revalue the applicant's equity in the pro- project, um, in compliance with the limited dividend provisions in subsidizing agency agreements. Thirty-seven says that the town will not issue a building permit without a final review of final plans by the assistant director for community planning and final approval from the subsidizing agency, and this is really referring to final plans of the affordable units. Thirty-eight, more than four certificates of occupancy shall be issued for units designated for rent at fair market rates until at least one certificate of occupancy is issued for an affordable unit, and then no more than eight certificates of occupancy for market rates shall be issued until at least two occupancy permits for affordable units are issued.
Did you catch the typos in that paragraph?
Well...
The one certificate, second line down?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great.
Number thirty-nine, uh, the comprehensive permit, which, of course, shall be binding upon the heirs, successors, and assigns of the applicant. Forty, um, whenever we say town staff, you can read it, include a designee by the respective department or division. Forty-one, if any, uh, part of this decision is held invalid or unenforceable, such invalidity or enforceability shall not affect the validity of the other parts of the decision. Forty-two, the comprehensive permit shall expire if construction is not commenced within three years, which is, you know, part of the state regs. Forty-three, if the applicant revises any of the plans, he shall present the revised plans to the board in accordance with the state statute. Insubstantial changes as determined by the board shall be allowed. Forty-four, the comprehensive permit may be transferred only upon compliance with the requirements of seven sixty CMR, et cetera. Uh, applicant shall pay for the town's cost of police and fire details for the project in accordance with the town's standard practices. And last, and this typo I did not catch, I thought I did. Actually, actually, I think...
Prior to thirty?
I did catch it, but somehow it's not here. It's the computer's fault. Prior to thirty days subsequent to the end of all applicable appeal periods, applicant shall record this decision in the Norfolk County Register of Deeds and provide the board and the building commission with a copy of the decision endorsed with applicable recording information.
Okay, I remembered what the problem is. It's October twenty-third. It is for the, um, hearing on the request by the JFK four-twenty Harvard Street people to put a restaurant in that needs ventilation.
Okay, so...
Oh, why don't I have that in my calendar?
I don't know, I have your email.
I said I was available. Oh, I said I was available, but I guess it didn't get confirmed, so I didn't put it in my calendar.
Oh, yeah.
I was available, but I just booked this one.
So what we're trying to do is establish the continued hearing date now, and we were thinking October twenty-third, but that doesn't work, and, um, the...
Okay, well, allevia is still true. I put that in my calendar.
Yeah, it goes, me too, yeah.
Um, we could do, uh, Monday, October thirtieth.
No, I can't.
We could do...
Twenty-third is out, huh?
So that's, yeah, that's also...
We could do Wednesday, how do I, no, Wednesday, we can't do November first, that's one-eleven. So, well, I'll tell you one date I had been thinking of. Where is that?
Before, before we go there, though, just, we, I don't, I didn't get confirmation on the twenty-third, and it's more than the three of us, so I'm just...
I, I can't tell you, um...
There's nobody here.
Yeah, I didn't either, but I just kind of assumed, I mean, I'd put it down, but Marie would be the one...
I, I can check with Maria, I can text her.
No, it was Jesse and, um, Johanna.
Okay, so...
Okay.
Because I didn't hear, I just...
Do you guys write it down, the twenty-third? Did you have that in? Jeff, you were on that project, weren't you?
I wasn't really involved with the fourth one, so, um...
Peter, were you? No, you weren't involved.
Since we didn't get a confirmation, I, I, I...
I'll take, I'll take the twenty-third, you guys...
I, I mean, I don't feel like I admitted to it, other than to say I'm available, but I never got...
Yeah, okay.
Usually, they're pretty good about, so we'll just say...
Okay.
First come, first served.
So now we're back to the twenty-third?
I have to, I have to work with my fellow planners.
Yeah, well, I'll wait to hear from you guys to...
Yeah, but...
But, okay, this is radical, but could we hold one after the other? The one on four JFK is not gonna be that long.
Well, as a matter of fact, there was one, what?
I mean, that's a small...
Right, it's gonna be quick, this one's not gonna be maliciously long either.
Yeah, I mean, even if there is, I agree.
Okay, so that would be on what date?
Twenty-third.
Oh, do them both on the same day? Oh!
Wait, I thought, I thought Lark couldn't do the twenty-third.
No, twenty-third I can do.
Oh, okay.
Oh, well, I've told you I can do it, and I've also told Ashley I can do it for...
Double date.
Okay, so that...
And Maria, so...
Yeah.
So if the applicant is okay with it, let's see if we can do two, I mean, it may take us to nine or ten, but...
Why don't, you wanna schedule it for eight PM?
And they're both on Harvard Street.
Yeah, that's, that's a, are you amenable to that?
Yeah.
All right, so this hearing would be continued to...
And what's the other hearing that you're gonna be listening to?
It's four-twenty Harvard, and they have just, they, they already got their comprehensive permit, they would like an adjustment to answer the question of whether they...
So I would like that, I would like this one to be first, 'cause I'm not involved in that second one.
That makes sense.
Okay, and not only that, if there's a chance that it isn't scheduled for then, you know?
True.
Yeah, all right, so seven o'clock, uh, October twenty-third, in this room, for four-fifty-five Harvard Street.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and you'll work it out with, um, Maria?
I don't know if you wanted to take any public comment, I mean, at this point.
We can, we can take public comment.
Oh, yeah, you can take it next time, yeah.
Um, well, we can take it. People are here, if they wanna say anything now about the conditions, I think you might as well let them. Mr. Leppson, I think you are?
Hi, Robert Leppson, Thorndike Street resident, town meeting member of Precinct Nine. I've got a question on the, um, the, during the process of construction, there was a condition that said it's not gonna take longer than a thirty-month period, which is quite a length of time, hopefully it won't take that long, but I'm just thinking about, um, where people who are, um, uh, the construction team, like, where are those folks are gonna be parking during that thirty-month timeframe?
Right, there's a construction management plan that's required, and they have to show where the trucks will park, what routes the trucks will take, and all that has to be approved by the town.
Okay, so it's not just the trucks that I'm concerned about, I'm talking about individual workers who drive their cars?
Yeah, all of that, all of that.
Because we've had construction on Thorndike Street on the, between Harvard and Winchester, going on probably three years at this point, and it's continuing, and our street is just filled with construction workers, day in and day out, for well in excess of the two-hour timeframe for parking, and I'm just fearing that this is just gonna go on, and, I mean, there's not a lot of room on that side of Thorndike Street, it's gonna be spillover onto our th- side of Thorndike Street, so part of the conditions, I would just really like to have that clarified, that would be very, very helpful, if that's possible.
The thing is that this board is really not qualified to say where's the best place for the trucks to park, and the truck routes, and the, and all that, it's really our transportation or building commissioner that, that does that.
So I should be taking it up with them, is what you're, is what you're saying?
Yes.
Yeah, there's no problem with doing that.
It does, it will say in our decision that, in fact, it is up to the, the, um, building commissioner to determine the parking hours and locations for construction workers' vehicles.
So that's part of the conditions, that's right?
So we're making it clear, he needs to decide, so that would be the person to go to.
Okay, great, thank you.
Certainly, the building commissioner does allow parking for workers to go beyond the two-hour limit on residential streets.
It's quite obvious that that's the case, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, construction is, is a real pain for everybody, but, you know, unfortunately, we all have to go through it.
They had, had only two hours to park, the construction would go beyond that.
Yeah.
Mr. Rosen?
Yeah, hi, uh, hi, I'm Mark Rosen, um, I'm, uh, Brooklyn resident on Thorndike Street. Um, I have a question for you about the construction. I'd like to see a, a dust barrier, you know, a fence, a chain link fence constructed, approximately about, uh, three stories high, with a dust, a very heavy dust barrier, uh, embedded into the fence to prevent dust from migrating down Thorndike Street from this construction project, um, because I, I, I know that that was a toxic site, and I know that they claim it's been cleaned up, but I have a very, very uneasy feeling about that dust migrating around the neighborhood. People grow, have, uh, gardens in their backyards, they grow their own vegetables, that kind of stuff can coat and just ruin everything, so that's one concern I have. In addition to the Campbells next door, who have, who are just gonna have their whole home pelted with dust from this construction project, it's just gonna be a mess. Uh, we're gonna have mud in the street, you know, you name it, it's true, uh, growing pains, people go through it, but there are things you can do to mitigate it.
I think it would be a good idea if I read the entire condition for the construction management plan, it's very detailed and very long.
Well, it very, it very specifically, again, gives, gives authority to the building commissioner to control dust and airborne, to, to manage dust and airborne particle control, so...
Security fencing.
But I think there's, I think there's a little more than that.
I don't wanna, I don't wanna, um, give up the microphone at this point, Mr. Engler, if you would mind waiting until I'm done, thank you.
Wait, as, let me just go through this, because it was in the testimony, um, given by the, um, environmental expert. Because of the, uh, slight contamination that was shown in the land, based on boring that was done, um, the land has to be removed or handled pursuant to, um, with appropriate risk management steps in order to prevent exactly what you're saying.
Yeah, thank you.
And that's, that's state law, so that...
Yeah, my other concern is the management of the actual construction crews, because that street is a thoroughfare for many, many, many children who go, or kind of going to the devotion school, and there's lots of kids, in fact, I mean, there are, there's just, two families just moved in, uh, seventy-five feet across the street from this project, and they have six children under the age of eight. Between the two families, each family has three children, and so, I mean, that's just a fraction of the children, young children in the neighborhood. There's been, uh, you know, neighborhoods, uh, have a rebirth, so the young couples come in and they have kids, so we have quite a lot of lovely young children, some of them aren't even walking, they're in strollers, and the concern is for the school-age kids during this construction process, and also for the children, so I just wanted to raise that issue. The last point I have, uh, is when are all of the unanswered questions from all of the previous meetings, when are those gonna get answered? Because there's a lot of unanswered questions hanging in the air. I'll give you an example, I know you're talking about waivers today, but just to give you an example of what I'm referring to, there was an extensive discussion at one meeting about the sound pressure level, uh, emitted from the stacking machine, and that we're gonna get some kind of ANSI, or ASA, or some kind of, uh, empirical testing data. And empirical testing data is provided, not only with the sound pressure level, but they also show you the method that is used, and it's a very, very specific method, it's outlined in these regulations. None of these questions are answered, and, and I think they're really important, because we're pushing forward on a project that's gonna impact very, very heavily on this neighborhood. This is an overmassed, everybody agrees, it's an overmassed project. You have zero support from the neighborhood, less than zero, because we have people who aren't even in the neighborhood who are coming to say, "This is a terrible idea. What's, what do you think? What's in the water?" You know, it's crazy. So the point is, if we can answer these questions, and they're all in the notes, uh, I don't wanna make a big list right now, everybody's tired, I, I worked a long day today, but I'm just saying that, you know, it seems like these questions get raised, yeah, 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 we'll bring you this information in the next meeting, and that information never shows up. It goes into a black hole somewhere, but it's important stuff.
No, I think there were a couple of instances of that, at least, I mean, I was, when I was reviewing, rereading the testimony all over the last couple of days, I think that's valid. I don't remember, um, the testing data about the sound, and I, I think...
I mean, we did have a whole meeting where the person who makes the lifts came and talked to us. It was also a noise... There's also a noise bylaw in the town, which they have to meet, and, you know, let's keep in mind, these lifts are inside a building.
Yeah, I mean, I was reassured by the presentation given by the owner of the city lift.
Sure.
And frankly, that's application to many projects.
I understand, but you have to understand that that type of presentation is what we call a sales presentation, 'cause they wanna sell that unit to you, so they're not gonna talk about things that, because I spoke to someone on the phone, and they said, yeah, it's noisy, because I could tell that, but the point is, it's not that it's noisy, whatever, but just to get into measurement of it, because the state regulation on health and safety says that the, the sound level has to be at a certain level, and because this building is not set back like other buildings that might have a stacking machine with a 20-foot setback, well, then the noise is in the building, but then you got 20 feet for the sound to dissipate, but here, the building is essentially on the street. I mean, you can walk down that sidewalk and touch that building, so what I'm saying is, is that's going to most probably create a situation where that sound will be directly in violation of the state ordinance, so that's why this is...
It's not just a state ordinance, we have a local bylaw, and if it does violate the local bylaw, you can bring a complaint to the building commissioner, and, and they'll do something about it.
Okay, good. Well, thank you very much, then.
Although I think it is a valid point, that there might be some requests outstanding. I think most of them have been answered, but I think someone, I prefer it not to be me, go through and see if there are any particular issues or left hanging.
I do think the conditions, which are very extensive, and how many are there? Forty?
Well, right, I mean, that's what, exactly why I was rereading all the testimony.
Forty, forty-six conditions, and they really do address all, you know, aspects of the construction and the design and all the rest, and, and most of them, and most of these issues, it is the different departments in town that have the review and approval authority. Now, I know that sometimes citizens don't trust the town, but this is the only method we can use when there's construction in the town, is to put our faith in the building department, and the planning department, and the tree arborist, and all that, and there are enough conditions in here that really do safeguard the concerns of the neighbors. However, that being said, when you have construction, there is noise, it can be nuisance, and, and no one's gonna deny that, but you can't prevent construction of buildings in a town, especially not on 40B projects, just because it's a nuisance to have construction.
You know, I, I think everyone appreciates that. What I would ask is, I honestly did read all of the testimony to make sure, or try to make sure if there were any additional conditions that should be added, but if there is something else you have noted, please email Polly and Karen so that we can take it up, because the hearings are not closing yet, and, I think to anyone.
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you very much for bringing up that point.
So, continuing the hearing until October 23rd at 7:00 P.M.
Mr. Engler, would you like to say something?
Good night.
Awesome, okay, the meeting is adjourned until October 23rd. Thank you all very much.